Good morning. The City of Boston Zoning Board of Appeal Hearing for February 27, 2024 is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the Open Meeting Law, including the updated provisions enacted by the legislature last year. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings until March 2025. This hearing of the board is being held remotely via the Zoom webinar event platform. This hearing is also being livestreamed. In order to ensure this hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. Information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public may enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. Board members, applicants, and their attorneys or representatives will participate in the hearing as panelists, and they will appear alongside the presentation materials when speaking. Panelists are strongly encouraged to keep video on. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments and opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials and members of the public. The chair may limit the number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project, that is, those members who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the raise hand button along the bottom of your screen in the Zoom webinar platform. Click it again, and your hand should go down. When the host sees your hand, you will receive a request to unmute yourself. Select Yes, and you should be able to talk. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press *9 to raise and lower your hand. You must press *6 to unmute yourself after you receive the request from the host. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first and then provide their comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Stembridge reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called, or the meeting host will not know to call on you at the appropriate time. Okay, Mr. Stembridge.
Good morning, Madam Chair, President.
Good morning, Mr. Valencia.
Good morning, Madam Chair, President.
Good morning, Ms. Betterbraza.
Good morning, Madam Chair, President.
Good morning, Mr. Collins.
Good morning, Madam Chair, President.
Good morning, Ms. Mukuhal.
Good morning, Madam Chair, President.
Good morning. The floor is yours, Mr. Stembridge. And just to let applicants know that we are a six-member board today.
First, we'll start off with the approval of meeting minutes scheduled for 9:30. We have, originally, they would be the meeting minutes from December 7, 2023, December 12, 2023, January 9, 2024, January 18, 2024, and January 23, 2024. I will make a motion. I will make a motion for the four men.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Betterbraza.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Mukuhal.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Next, we will go on to the extensions, scheduled, the request for extensions scheduled for 9:30 a.m. We have four companion extensions in the beginning. Now, I will read them in, and then I will read the notes. First, we have case BOA 1192873 with the address of 23 Newton Street. We have, next, we have case BOA 1192893 with the address of 23 Newton Street. Well, then we have case BOA 1192843 with the address of 25 Newton Street. And then we have case BOA 1192938, also with the address of 25 Newton Street. I will read some information to the board and then ask if the applicant and/or their representative is present to explain. First, we have, for all of them, the board originally granted this relief on August 18 of 2021, and the first extension was granted until August 13 of this year. This is the applicant's second request for a one-year extension until August 13 of 2025. I will ask the applicant and/or their representative to explain the situation to the board.
Is the applicant present? Scott Martyr or someone representing 23 and 25 Newton? Jessica, do you have any raised hands on this? Okay, it looks like Mr. Martyr is here. I can't, I don't know what that means, okay.
I think he means audio.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I'm going to elevate him as a panelist because he's not able to talk right now where he is.
Thank you.
So now that he's accepted it, Scott, can you unmute yourself? You should be a panelist now. Okay, thank you.
Sorry about that. So, thank you very much, Madam Chair, and the rest of the board as well, everything to make. I was ready to the extension back in last August. I put the correct addresses, but I didn't put all the BOA numbers down by accident. I only put, I'm not sure why. So, the addresses were correct on the letter, just not all four BOAs, and I only put two of them. I have all the documents ready for permit. I just have to upload two items. It was just a mistake on my part. That's why I'm here today. So, when I went in to figure what was going on, to do the final submission of my permits of my documents, for some reason, I only put the BOAs for 25 Newton Street, even though I wrote 23 and 25 on my letter, I didn't list the BOAs for 23, even though it was not approved back in August. So, it was a clerical error on my side. That's why.
Okay, so you're just looking for the extension to August 2025 in order to correct these matters? Otherwise, you're ready to proceed?
Yeah, I'm ready to proceed. I have everything. Yeah, I have everything.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
May I make a motion to extend until August 13, 2025?
May I have a second? Mr. Stembridge. You're mute. You're on mute.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Betterbraza.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Mukuhal.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
All right, thank you so much, everybody.
Next, we have a BOA 1252941 with the address of 1385 River Street. The board originally granted this relief on February 25, 2022, and this relief remains valid until February 25 of this year. This is the applicant's first request for a one-year extension until February 25 of 2025. Is the applicant and/or their representative is present, will they explain to the board
Jessica, is there anyone present?
Madam Chair, their hand is raised, so I'm going to try to elevate them. Franklin, are you on this for this case?
So, anyone else who's seeking an extension while we're working on this, can you please raise your hands and so Ms. Ambassador can help you become a panelist? Thank you.
Madam Chair, given them requests, they should be accepted.
Hello?
Hi, are you on for this case?
Yes, ma'am.
Great, can you identify yourself and just please let us know why you're seeking the extension briefly?
Yes, ma'am. Good morning, Madam Chair, and everybody else that's here, thank you. My name's Franklin Ortiz. I own 1385 River Street. I was trying to get to add an attic unit there, and I, it was granted, the relief back in 2022, but I have had some hardships with the family and stuff like that, and I was trying to see if I can extend it so that I can get a loan this year to see if I can do the project, since it was set to expire this month, and that's why I requested for the extension.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
I would motion to extend to the, what was the date on? February 25 of 2025, February 25, 2025.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Betterbraza.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Mukuhal. Okay, the chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, everybody else. I appreciate that.
Next, we have case BOA 1280543 with the address of 190 to 192 Dudley Street. The board originally granted this relief on March 11 of 2022, and this relief remained valid until March 11.
Move them to the next slide, please, the next case, the controlling. Thank you.
Done, thank you. This is the applicant's first, I'm sorry, and this relief remains valid until March 11 of this year. This is the applicant's first request for a one-year extension until March 11 of 2025. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, will they explain first?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stembridge. Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Mr. Marancy. I'm an attorney with a business address at 350 West Broadway in South Boston. I am filling in today for Attorney Patrick Mahoney, who was engaged in another matter. I spoke with Attorney Mahoney. As Mr. Stembridge said, this is a first extension request. Mr. Mahoney advised that permit issuance is expected fairly soon. I don't know all the details, but he did ask me to relate to the board that his client needs this additional one-year extension, just to make sure that there is enough time for the permit to issue before the expiration date, which is March 11.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
I motion to, sorry, no, I mean the date again, I will motion to extend to?
March 11, 2025.
March 11, 2025.
May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Stembridge.
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Betterbraza.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Mukuhal.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have a BOA 1102209 with the address of 99 to 105 Bearmont Avenue. The board originally granted this relief on February 17 of 2021, and the first extension was granted until February 17 of this year. This is the applicant's second request for a one-year extension until February 17 of 2025. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, will they explain first?
Yes, Mr. Stembridge. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Justin Burns. I'm a zoning attorney at Pulgini &amp; Norton, business address 10 Forbes Road, Braintree, Massachusetts. We're requesting a one-year extension for this project. Due to the current interest rate environment, the lender has stated that the project is no longer financeable as a rental building, so we'll be going back to the BPDA to file a notice of project change from rental to home ownership. Construction documents are all complete. We just need additional time for the notice of project change process to complete. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
I motion to extend to February 27, 2025.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Betterbraza.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Mukuhal.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1130385 with the address of 33 to 35 Maverick Square.
Recording in progress.
Yes. The board originally granted this relief on February 26, 2021, and the first extension was granted until February 26 of this year. This is the applicant's second request for a one-year extension until February 26 of next year. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, will they explain to the board first?
Yes, Mr. Stembridge, thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Lynch, address of 245 Summer Street East, Boston, behalf of petitioner. As Mr. Stembridge indicated, this is our second request for an extension. This involved relief that allowed for the change of occupancy of an existing mixed-use building in Maverick Square to change the occupancy and allow additional dwelling unit. We are finalizing some work that has been ongoing on the property. We need to just finalize some plans relative to egress, and we expect to be able to complete that relatively shortly.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
I motion to extend to February 26, 2025.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Betterbraza.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Mukuhal.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Next, we have case BOA 940063 with the address of 3 Athenall Road. The board originally granted this relief on December 6 of 2019. With tolling and previous extensions, the relief remains valid until February 28 of this year. Yeah, this is the applicant's third request for a one-year extension until February 28.
2025.
Of 2025. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, will they explain first?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Mike Ross, from the law firm of Prince Lobel, one international place in Boston. This project just went through a notice of project change and was approved by the BPDA Board on February 15 for minor changes relating to additional units. Therefore, we need to now reappear before this board, presumably in the form of a Board of Final Arbiter hearing, in order to approve the changes to the project. Therefore, we would respectfully request a one-year extension from its expiration date, which, as the secretary mentioned, was February 28.
Okay, any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Motion to extend to February 28, 2025.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Betterbraza.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Mukuhal.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Have a nice day.
Next, we have case BOA 1221855 with the address of 671 East 63. The board originally granted this relief on November 5 of 2021, and the relief remained valid until November 5 of 2023, which expired. This is the applicant's first request for a one-year extension. If the applicant, if the applicant is present, would they, or their representative, I'm sorry, if approved, it will be extended until February 27 of 2025, with the applicant and/or their representative, will they explain to the board?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Secretary. Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Ryan Spitz with Adams &amp; Maranti, business address of 168 8th Street, 4th floor, South Boston. As read into the record, this was approved by this board on November 5, 2021, during a period that fell within the pandemic timeframe. The owner of the property, who is not familiar with the construction process, discovered recently that his approval expired on or about November 5, 2023. The proposal, a little background, proposal went through an extensive review process with the BPDA and Boston Water and Sewer Commission. Both have been completed as of today. The review with the Boston Water and Sewer Commission went through an unanticipated lengthy review, coupled with two different engineer engagements to see the review process to an end. Further, the original architect on this proposal left the architectural firm, which left a second architect to come in and handle it. So, due to those unforeseen circumstances, we're here respectfully requesting a one-year extension.
Thank you, Attorney Spitz. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
I motion to extend to February 26, 2025.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Betterbraza.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Mukuhal.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Great, thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 824430 with the address of 127 Harmony Street.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I need some records from this case.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Valencia. We are now a five-member board. Please proceed, Mr. Stembridge.
Thank you. The board originally granted this relief on September 14 of 2018, was tolling, the relief remained valid until September 20, 2022, which expired. This is the applicant's first request for a one-year extension. And that would be, if the extension is granted, that will be until February 27 of 2025. Is the applicant and/or their representative is present, will they please explain the situation to the board?
Yes, I am present. My name is John Harding. I'm a project manager with the Community Builders. We are the developer and owner of the site. The situation is this project was originally approved as part of a four-phase master plan development, so it was sort of always intended that the project wouldn't start construction until earlier phases were completed. Additionally, it was delayed due to COVID cost inflation and public funding availability, so this project is fully affordable, and so we're still working through some of the last challenges with public funding availability and are asking for an additional year.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve to February 27, 2025.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia, sorry, Ms. Betterbraza.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Mukuhal.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have a BOA 388758 with the address of 1102 to 1106 Blue Hill Avenue. The board originally granted this relief on January 23, 2015, and this relief remained valid until January 23, 2017, which expired. This is the applicant's first request for a one-year extension until February 6, 2025. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, will they explain to the board
Hello?
Yeah, you're on mute.
Hello, how you doing? Hi, my name is Leon Byron. I'm actually the manager of 1102, and, and, I'm sorry, I'm going to explain. We put in the application for this, and unfortunately, the owner let the time lapse because he was unaware of the time it took to put in for the application and for a request for extension. And then also, when the pandemic came, it just kind of made it a little bit harder for him to do the extension. So, just asking if you can forgive our lapse of not knowing and seeing if we can get extension, please.
So, can you just give us a sense of where you are with this project to move it forward?
Yes, we actually got the assembly license, got all the permitting, got all the zoning done with it, got, we did all the community process over again, and the community gave us community supporting letters, so we are up to date with everything of ISD at this point.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve the extension to February 26, 2025.
May I have a second? It's February 6. February 6.
Sorry, February 6.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Betterbraza.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Mukuhal.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you. Finally, we have three companion cases under the extension. The first is case BOA 1171660, the address, with an address of 970 Saratoga Street. Then we have case BOA 1509717 with the same address of 970 Saratoga Street. And finally, we have case BOA 907493 with the address of 125 Orchard Street. The applicant is requesting to extend, extend the time requirement, file the ZBDA option with ISD. The board held the hearing and approved the applicant's relief on November 21 of 2023. Under the Enabling Act, the ZBDA decision has to be filed with ISD in 90 days up to February 26 of this year. Basically, the request is to extend the?
Mr. Stembridge, why don't we let Mr. Attorney Lynn explain? It's a little complicated.
That's an excellent idea.
All right, Mr. Lynn, are you available?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Richard Lynn, on behalf of the petitioner. As Mr. Stembridge certainly was explaining properly, the decisions by the board are to be filed within 90 days. We've drafted a decision, I believe, in speaking with Mr. Salas. This is being signed today and will be filed with ISD this coming Friday. However, because that will be outside of the 90-day window, it is appropriate for the board to extend the decision filing date to allow for that to be timely. This is an Article 80 project that involved mixed use up to 41 residential units in ground level retail, and we understand certainly that the ability to get that decision signed sometimes takes a little bit more time than usual, so we're requesting a very brief extension to allow that to be timely, and the board would simply need to vote to extend the 90-day deadline.
And Attorney Lynn's extension to what date would be helpful to you?
I did just, you know, in case there's some further delay, March 31st would be fine, but my understanding, based upon my conversations with Mr. Salas, is that it will be filed this Friday.
All right, thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
I motion to extend to March 31st.
2024, is there a second?
2023. Second.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Betterbraza.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Mukuhal.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Next, we will Next, we will go to the Board, Board of Final Auditor Hearing, scheduled for 9:30 a.m. Case BOA, oh, excuse me, case BOA 1110007 with the address of 47 Conner Street. I believe Attorney Lynn is with us and she will explain.
Yes, thank you again, Mr. Stenbridge, Madam Chair, members of the board, Richard Lynn's 225 Summer Street on behalf of the petitioner for 47 Conner Street. Madam Chair, this project was approved by the board back in 2021. There is an extension that has allowed for this to be, the decision to be extended through the summer of 2024. The applicant has completed design review in pretty much all of the requirements for permitting. This decision that the board rendered subjected this to two provisos. One was BPDA design review, the other is reviewed by the Boston Transportation Department. In doing so, we originally had proposed 11 parking spaces that would be managed through a stacker system in a ground-level garage. BTD and BPDA had made some comments about that decision and certainly the design of this building. The BPDA required that, from a, from a design standpoint, to reduce the parking from 11 to 7 spaces. The board did grant relief for insufficient option parking anyhow, so that would be permissible. However, in reviewing that, in reviewing that change, to do a stacker system for that number of cars creates somewhat of a, a cost issue for the developer. So one of the things we are looking to have the board also consider, and I know BTD usually raises this as a maneuverability issue, is to eliminate the stacker as well. That would reduce the total parking to four spaces. That would be for seven units. The four spaces would be assigned to each of the two-bedroom units in the building. The remaining three units would be one-bedroom studios. And we believe that that will also eliminate two variances that were granted by the board. First would be height of the building. The building with the stackers, you know, that was originally designed as about 38 feet. If we were able to eliminate the stackers, we could certainly lower that lower level of the building, which is now at 16 feet, down to probably around 11, 11 feet. And lowers the building actually below the height maximum of 35 feet for that area. So we believe that this would be a much more cost-efficient approach since the recommended design change to reduce the parking by BPDA really doesn't make the, the design efficient, especially if we're going to use stackers. And we would be eliminating two of the violations that the board had granted relief on. So we're respectfully requesting that change to allow it from 11 to four spaces and eliminate the stackers entirely.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, Ms. Lynn, just out of curiosity, what is usually the cost to be at those parking stackers?
I don't have the exact number, but the idea of Mr. Valencia would have been if we had 11 parking spaces, which, you know, was more parking than we had units. I know that the BTD has a particular issue when it comes to that. We at least would have, this is intended to be a condo project, at least would have had the ability to recoup some of that cost in the sales of the units. I think reducing it from 11 to seven, but still, still having a stacker system just eliminates sort of that entire benefit from that cost. So removing the stackers entirely and just maintaining four parking spaces makes this just that much more efficient cost-wise. If we were doing 11 spaces with stackers, that's a different story. But the BPDA, you know, indicated no more than seven spaces.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Valencia, it can range up to $100,000 per car?
Per car? Okay, thank you. Just curious, because I know from the ground parking cost could be $70,000 to $80,000 for surface parking, $30,000 to $40,000. So I was just curious to hear about that, the stacker. So I didn't know about that. Thank you.
Yeah, I think certainly in a larger project, it makes good sense. I think that this is originally designed. We were trying to address, you know, anticipated concern of parking. We don't recall that being a major issue for this project. So that's one of the reasons we're also making requests to reduce it.
Thank you. Well, just a question for, just to know, out of curiosity, not related to the project, this relates.
Thank you.
All right, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to perform a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Mukuhall?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
We'll move on to the recommendations scheduled for 9:30 a.m. These recommendations come from the recent subcommittee meeting. First, we have case BOA 1539958 with the address of 68 Horace Street. The case was approved with no building, with no building progress. Then we have case BOA 1516063, the address of 49 Monmouth Street. This case was approved with BPAD design view. Next, we have case BOA 1549627 with the address of 7 Hill Street. This case was approved. Next, we have case BOA 154732 with the address of 8 Monmouth Street. This case was deferred until today's here, until today's hearing, later in the hearing, 11:30. Case BOA 1544497 with the address of 71 to 77 Summer, Summer Street. This was approved. Next, we have case BOA 1511559 with the address of 791 East Third Street. This case was denied without prejudice. Next, we have case BOA 1548743 with the address of 11 Edge Hill Street. This case was approved. Next, we have case BOA 1545620 with the address of 75 McFarland Street. This case was approved. Next, we have case BOA 1534425 with the address of 14 Victoria Street. This case will also be heard later this morning. Then we move on to case BOA 1535324 with the address of 55 Somerset Street. This case was approved. Next, we move on to case BOA 1527583 with the address of 899 to 901 Washington Street. This case was approved. Then we have case BOA 1525805 with the address of 44 Ondell Road. This case was approved. Next, we have case BOA 1543234 with the address of 77 Woodham Road. This case was approved with BPAD design view. Next, we have case BOA 1544745 with the address of 615 to 619 Sunset Street. This case was approved. Finally, we have case BOA 1528556 with the address of 14 Conner Street, which was also approved.
Thank you. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like a motion to approve all the recommendations from the committee.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Mukuhall?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Next, we move on to the hearings scheduled for 9:30 a.m. First, we have case BOA 1547120.
You want to do the terms?
Oh, forgive me. I'm reminded that we need to ask for if any withdrawals or disburse from the 9:30 timeframe.
I said we have, yep. Samantha, you want to go down the list?
Uh, yes.
Okay, yeah, Samantha, are you looking at?
Yes, I'm looking for deferral, but I think for 79 West Norton Street. It was in addition to the violation added a couple of days ago, so...
That's, thank you. That's the third case, Mr. Stenbridge?
That would be case BOA 1522524 with the address of 79 West Norton Street.
On a motion?
Thank you.
Uh, motion to, motion to postpone this case until April 9 of this year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Mukuhall?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. See you then.
Thank you so much. You guys have a good day.
Anyone else? Please hand if you have a question to make the file. I saw another hand. I don't know if they were related, Mr. Burns. Looks like only down. Is anyone else looking to give it the file? All right, let's keep going.
Back to case BOA 1547120 with the address of 2 to 4 McFarland Street. If the applicant and/or their representative present, would they explain to the board first?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you all for your time. My name is Priscilla Andrade. I'm here with Adam Hirsch. We're owners of Exodus Bagels LLC. And we are here on behalf of Josephine Savini, property owner at 2 McFar, 2 to 4 McFarland Street in Rosendale. We are here requesting for relief or variance of use from a catering, this is a licensed catering kitchen, to a large takeout restaurant. The proposed plans comply with the conditions needed for that conditional use. So we are seeking for that today so that we may move forward in the permit process.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office has deferred to the judgment of this board. Some background information on the community process. ONS hosted a Butters meeting on February, hosted a Butters meeting. There was a number of residents that were attended that spoke in support of this proposal. We're unaware of many concerns at this time. The meeting was held on December 18 of 2024. With that, we'll defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Madam Chair, I have no raise hands.
With that, may I have a motion? Nope, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Diana Bronchek with Counselor Peppen's office. The counselor and his staff would like to go on record that we fully support this project and fully support Priscilla and Adam and Exodus Bagels.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to perform a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge? Are you on mute, Mr. Stenbridge?
Uh, no, no. Yes, Madam.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Mukuhall?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have case BOA 1559621 with the address of 3 Regent Circle. If the applicant and/or their representative present, would they explain to the board first?
Uh, yes, Mr. Secretary. Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you for your time this morning. My name is Kyle Smith of Statera Law. Business address of 359 Newbury Street in Boston's Back Bay. I can directly hop into everything if, unless you have any preliminary questions.
No, please proceed.
Okay. So back in the eighties, there was originally one parcel of land that was both 3-regent and 47 Borough Street for which the predecessors to this board granted relief to subdivide the parcel into two parcels and also to add a dwelling unit. In that ZBA approval was a proviso implemented that, by that board, which was arguably an overstep as discussed with Attorney Salas and other members of the city to make those properties require them to be owner-occupied. In 1988, there was a subsequent ZBA decision that related strictly to 1-3 regent to increase the occupancy from a 2 to a 3 family. That ZBA decision in 1988 was silent on that prior proviso of owner occupancy. It did not speak to it, it did not deny it or overturn it, it did not reaffirm it. The current parcel 1-3 is currently the subject for a real estate sale. And a buyer in their due diligence uncovered this proviso, which for owner occupancy is not a zoning speaking proviso and as agreed by Attorney Salas in Communications, was probably an overstep or overreached by the ZBA in 1982. In speaking with Attorney Salas, the best means for removing this proviso is to go through this formal process. And that is the sole thing that is being sought under this ALT number. There is no suggested or proposed changes to the physical structure, its legal use, its characteristics or otherwise. It is strictly to seek to remove this proviso as it relates only to 1-3 regent, 3-regent, which is the only parcel that we now control. So it would arguably remain over 47 Borough Street, but we are not the legal owner of that property and we have no control over what those legal owners as a condominium structure would seek to do on that parcel. So we are speaking solely to the owner occupancy proviso of the 1982 decision as it relates to 3-regent. And we've run this through the community process in an expeditious manner. We have no known opposition. We have the unanimous approval of the JPNC in this matter. All of this has been provided to Stephanie Haynes for your review.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office likes to defer to the judgment of this board. ONS hosted a Butters meeting on February 6. There was a lot of questions just regarding the process, but the applicant then went on to meet with the JPNC. We're unaware of any serious concerns at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, please. Yes?
With that, may I have a motion?
Um, motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Mukuhall?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board.
The next case on the list has been postponed. So we'll move on to the following three companion cases. First, we have case BOA 1563449 with the address of 1A Franklin Park Road. Along with that, we have case BOA 1563450 with the address of 1B Franklin Park Road. Along with those two, we have case BOA 1563451 with the address of 1C Franklin Park Road. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they explain to the board first?
Madam Chair, you just joined as a panelist. You should... Madam Chair, he's just joined as a panelist, um, you should be all set, go ahead.
Yes, good morning, um, thank you everyone, um, Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Peter Vancon, representing, um, a, uh, a, Boston Outdoor Preschool Network, um, which is functioning, they're wanting to function with a new location within the Franklin Park Zoo and they, um, they, they have a light business model for their preschools that are predominantly outside and they utilize, um, existing infrastructure and, um, light yurt tent structures, which, uh, from the building purchase perspective, are buildings, but, um, and which is why we are here and we will be seeking a building permit, um, if we're granted relief here, um, but are essentially a, a, a light service provider that built upon existing infrastructure and at the zoo, of course, there are many, um, existing buildings. There's, we know that that is a, uh, an institution within Franklin Park that we are all well aware of. It happens that the overlaying zoning is open space parkland and, uh, there is a limitation on 600-foot structures that can be built, um, without relief. So that's why we are here, we're seeking relief for three yurt structures, which will be built within, um, and near existing structures, they're not on the periphery in any way, shape or form. Uh, they'll utilize existing bathroom infrastructure, things like that, and power. Um, anyway, they're around 750 square feet each, so they're slightly larger, they're prefabricated and, uh, therefore we're not able to go smaller and meet that 600 square feet. But as you all know, uh, Franklin Park Zoo is well established as many buildings much larger than 600 square feet, so we don't, we don't see this being a detriment and, um, most certainly will be an asset to the community, uh, the community mission of the Boston Outdoor Preschool Network is amazing, um, and then of course, uh, Franklin Park Zoo being such a wonderful fixture within our city, so, um, with that, I'll turn it over to any questions.
Thank you, sounds, sounds like a great opportunity for preschoolers, toddlers. All right, questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time the Mayor's Office likes to defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information on the community process, um, its location is, is pretty unique, so there's not a lot of Butters, uh, we did have them circulate, um, flyers to residents that were within 300 feet of the property, though, uh, we're unaware of any concerns at this time. With that, I'd like to defer to the board, thank you.
Thank you, I have no raise hands.
With that, may I have a motion?
Connor, you do have the Butters, they're the amazing animals at the zoo.
There you go, uh, may I have a motion?
Must be part of the law.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. McCallum?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries, good luck.
Excellent, thank you so much.
Next, we have four companion cases. For us, there are the case BOA 1554463 with the address of 54 Dorset Street. Next, we have, next we have is BOA 1554459, also with the address of 54 Dorset Street. Then we have case BOA 1554465 with the address of 56 Dorset Street. And then we have case BOA 1554464 with the address of 50, also with the address of 56 Dorset Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they explain the cases to the board first?
Uh, yes, uh, good morning, Madam Chair, uh, members, uh, the board, Attorney Nick Cizula, McDermott, Corlty, Miller &amp; Hanley, 28 State Street, uh, in Boston. Uh, here today on behalf of two abutting property owners, as Mr. Secretary read into the record, uh, for these four companion cases. Uh, first, Adam Sarbaugh is with me today from 54 Dorset LLC, who's the owner of 54 Dorset. And Kenny and Annalee Nguyen from the Nguyen Revocable Trust, they are the owner of the abutting 56 Dorset property since 1994 and they live at the property now. Um, you can leave it on here for a minute, uh, this property is located between Boston Street and Dot Ave, uh, in the McCormick area of Dorchester. 54 Dorset is an existing single-family dwelling on a pretty much completely paved lot of about a little less than 5,000 square feet, which will be demolished. 56 Dorset is an existing three-family dwelling of 3,500 square feet on a 3,181 square foot lot, uh, which will remain. Uh, there is a zoning chart here, Madam Chair, which I can come back to if there are any questions. Uh, but next slide, please. This will just explain a little bit more detail, uh, what we're asking for, trying to lay it out as plainly as we could because, uh, there's a decent amount here. But in essence, we have four separate appeals in front of the board for, for the, uh, these, these two projects. This was a collaboration between, uh, the developer of 54 Dorset, uh, with his long-term neighbors, the Nguyen's that live at 56 Dorset, and they're hoping to use this, uh, development project at 54 Dorset as kind of a catalyst to help create, uh, a shared driveway and add parking to the rear of their property to take cars off the street. Uh, the main project, as you can, uh, see here at the top, is for a three-story, six-unit condominium home ownership building, proposing one-to-one parking ratio for 54 Dorset. We also need zoning room accessory ancillary parking on our own lot. And this new six-unit building, uh, will include two units as two-bed, two-baths and four units as three-bed, two-baths, all of a very large size, between 1,200 and 1,260 square feet, so nice, large, family-sized units, uh, and they will be for sale condo homeownership. The project also includes two new parking spaces for the existing 56 Dorset three-family next door, which will be provided access via new easement with the main development project at 54 Dorset. And so we need zoning relief for that easement access to provide it to 56 Dorset next to us, uh, as well as relief for accessory parking to their building, uh, as well. So all in all, what, and what we'll show you in one second, uh, in plan, is that we're constructing or proposing to construct a new six-unit, uh, condo building, proposing eight new off-street parking spaces. Six of those would be for the new six-unit building at 54 Dorset and two of those would be for the existing three-unit building at 56 Dorset. Uh, I know that was a lot of information, um, I'm gonna throw it to Adam, who can quickly show you what I said in plan and then of course, happy to answer any questions you might have about the kind of overall, uh, project. So Adam, I'll toss it over to you and next slide, please.
So just a quick question, sorry, quick question before you speak, the, the driveway, just to clarify, so there is no curb cut currently, right? Is there?
So there's actually, this, this is the, the slide we have up right here is the existing site plan and you'll see that there's actually a double driveway on the right side here between 50, um, the other neighbor essentially, and that's a double curb cut, which we're proposing shrinking down to a single curb cut for that neighbor at 50, 52. And if you go to the next slide, you'll see that we're actually just moving the building over. So they will remain with their driveway on that side and we're moving the driveway between the, um, 56 and 54 and eliminating the double curb cut on the other side.
So no, no new curb cut, Madam Chair, just a relocation of the curb cut from the one side of 54 to the other side to be between the two properties that were here in front of you today, 54 and 56. So it's not a new curb cut, it's a relocation of the curb cut.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, please proceed.
Yeah, no worries, so, so this is the site plan where you're seeing that, and we can go back to this, that will kind of help, uh, to see that, but if you move, um, next slide, you'll see the proposal shows, uh, next slide down again, please. Um, proposal then shows the, um, center entrance there, two, two bedrooms on the first floor in the basement, followed by three bedrooms and two bathroom condo units on the second and third floor. We use the mansard style to, uh, maintain a, a look of a two-and-a-half story, as we've heard feedback through the community, to eliminate, um, an A-frame pitch, which, uh, they, they was looked, was frowned upon on our community meetings, uh, previously. And during the community process, we did talk into it, next slide, please. Is, we put some decks, if you notice, the outdoor space in the decks are not spun facing on the street, off the living room for common, they're more private and passive, um, off the bedrooms for their, you know, in the, in the rear of the building, um, per person, community feedback. The, we've also talked extensively with the parking and said that we will have an in-the-master deed restriction, that the parking spaces will be for the HOA only and will not be able to be rented to outside people, outside of this, to really focus, um, and, and maintain the intent of what we're going for right here. Um, we also had the, trying to go through what, what else we had. North Shore Firm or Airbnb rentals, these, you know, um, will be in the master deed as well. These are homeownership, who've done condos in the neighborhood here, um, and worked with the McCormick Civic extensively on numerous projects, all of which are homeownership and, um, have, has successfully been sold out as condos and tend to do the same thing here. I think, if there's any questions, I'll leave that question to the board.
Yeah, Adam, do you just want to scroll, Madam, uh, Madam Ambassador, Mr. Ambassador, if you just scroll through, just again, uh, this is the upper, and I think this is a good one to show right, Adam. I think it's, maybe we leave it on this for questions, Madam Chair, but you can kind of see here what we're talking about and you can see the parking to the rear as well. Um, it's a completely paved lot and, um, you know, we've, we've, uh, we're working, you know, I think as part of the process, which is great, right, is we've worked with the Nguyen's on their, you know, to try and improve their own parking situation. Um, so that, that kind of, you know, process worked very well from an outreach standpoint that Adam did to be able to, you know, have this, we would say hopefully be a win-win for not only this property by adding six new units, but also for our neighbors who, uh, will now actually have access to parking in their rear, which they haven't before. Um, so we're pretty proud of that, of those discussions. So again, happy to answer any questions you may have, Madam Chair, and I'm happy to go back to anything, so, thank you.
Thank you, so just to clarify, the, the parking spaces you're showing right now, is that intended to show all of them, including your neighbor, the, the red car and the one next to it? Are, are the two spots for the neighbor?
Yeah, that is correct.
Okay, uh, I'm, I'm guessing someone else may ask this on the board, so I'm gonna say, uh, is Bob DiMico available to talk about maneuverability, because it, it looks a bit cramped to me, but...
Yep. He's not available, Bob is not available today, Madam Chair.
Okay, did he provide any, um, feedback? Written feedback?
What he said was 54 to 56 Dorset Street, the parking plan works well.
Okay. The BPDA recommendation, so I'm not sure if Jeff, I'm, I'm totally scared to talk about the comments on parking. Jeff, are you here?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Jeff Hampton, BPDA, uh, we're recommending approval, uh, not approval, I'm sorry, denial without prejudice on this. Um, this is too much parking, too much paving, uh, we're not in favor, we're in favor of a multifamily use on this, but we cannot support the current parking layout nor the lack of usable open space on this, the green space. Um, so we are on the record for denial without prejudice. This is something where I think they need to go back to the drawing board for, uh, the off-street parking. Thank you.
Thank you, other questions from the board?
Just, just for clarification, um, 54 Dorset is going from a two-family to a six-family and then 56 Dorset, the two families are staying and this is in a 2F, uh, 5,000.
Uh, yes.
I get it, that's, that's, so, no, I got that. So the 54 Dorset is actually a single-family to a, to a six-family and 56 Dorset is a three-family, maintaining as a three-family. Um, part of our community process in this was modeled both on the density and the multifamily of 45 Dorset Street, which is directly across the street, which is a seven-unit building. Um, and in terms of, you know, just a quick response to, um, Mr. Hampton's comment.
Yeah.
The, we don't have, um, you know, an open space violation. We did try and work with both the community and our neighbors as parking is a, is a concern in the neighborhood and, and really was the biggest driver of conversation. Um, so it's trying to request to reduce the parking more than what the zoning, you know, further into violation kind of pits against the wishes of the community, uh, the community group, which we did get a 13-to-1 vote of support and the only ironically, um, single member of opposition is we didn't have enough parking and they didn't, you know, parking was the issue. So, um, I, I just wanted to comment on both of those.
Yeah, and, and Madam Chair, just to jump off on that one last point that Adam didn't bring up is again, these are condo units, I mean, we, we understand the BPDA's recommendation, we were aware of it, these are condo units, um, and, you know, they are larger-sized family units as either two or three bedrooms, so having one-to-one parking is kind of more of a need here than if these were studios or one beds and if they were rentals. Um, so I think that was part of, part of the issue as well here is, you know, um, and the fact that we don't need an open space variance where it should be, so, but just wanted to address those, so thank you.
But you are, you are, you are in violation of the FAR going from, um, a one-family to a six-family. Again, um, that's why I just needed clarification, because the two, the two properties are in a 2F 5,000 sub-district, um, so I just wanted the board members to know that and be aware.
That's correct, you know, Ms. Barazza, yeah, it, it, we, it's a .5 max and we are requesting a 1.68 for the new building.
They're tripling the density, uh, just to comment on Jeff Hampton's reading of the, of the BPDA and I think, I think, you know, further it did comment finding ways to potentially, um, use the existing driveway in finding a way to provide parking, um, you know, for the lot, but not necessarily recreating a new curb cut. And then the other thing is for 56 Dorset Street, you're removing com- complete open green space and substituting it with asphalt parking, so just making some comments here for board members to consider.
Madam Chair, may I quickly respond? It'll take 30 seconds to this, Barazza. As we're, we're, you're, we agree, um, we're happy to work through design review with the BPDA as to, you know, if needed, pick pavers, permeable pavers, et cetera, and working on that green space. Um, you know, I think what we heard throughout the process was just that parking was at a premium and so that's why, this is why you're, what you're seeing. But I, I understand and agree, can't, can't argue with you on that, I just, if there's some opportunity for us to work on permeable pavers or something with design review, we're, we're happy to do that if that's important enough, obviously understand that open space is just as important as parking and not more in some situations, so, thank you.
Other questions from the board? Hearing none, I'm gonna open it to public testimony.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time the Mayor's Office likes to defer to the judgment of this board. Our office held a Butters meeting on January 10th of this year, uh, there were seven participants. Uh, by all accounts, it was a very positive meeting, there was some concerns expressed about rodent activity in the area and we asked that if approved, uh, the applicant continue to work with the neighborhood and make sure there's a robust abatement plan. Uh, the applicant then went on to meet with the Civic Association for that area, which is the McCormick Civic, uh, which voted to support this proposal, um, and there should be a letter of support on file. Uh, with that, defer to the board at this time, thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Liam Remus from Counselor Fitzgerald's office. Our office would like to go on record and support this project. The Neighborhood Association is in favor of the off-street parking this product provides, therefore we are in complete support, thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Jill McGeckren, City Council, Erin Murphy's office would like to go in, uh, record in support of the project, thank you.
Indis?
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board, uh, my name is Indis Johnson and I'm from Counselor-at-Large Santana, Henry Santana's office, and the council would like to go on record in support of this proposal, thank you.
I have no additional raise, yes?
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Make a, make a motion of approval with the BPDA's design review. A second.
Okay. Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
I vote no. I think the FAR of tripling it is excessive and for the reasons that I also noted that is taking too much of open space and trying it into impermeable surface. I vote no.
Ms. McCall?
Hi, also vote no, also for the creation of a new curb cut. I understand that the applicant said they're simply moving it, but creating this curb cut, you're taking away open space. There is also a clear lack of maneuverability, and the parking is very, very condensed here.
Okay, the motion does not carry. Samantha, can you also remind me for a six-member board? We need five, five penny paper?
Yes, yes, Madam Chair, you're correct.
Okay. That motion did not carry.
Did you put your vote in as well?
I didn't because it doesn't matter, but I...
It should be recorded regardless.
I also object. Is there another motion?
I would like to put forward a motion of denial without prejudice on all four cases citing similar BPDA recommendations and concerns for the project.
Is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. McCall?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
May I give you your time?
Next, we have BOA 1523007 with the address of 185 East Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, will they explain the case to the board?
Yes, Mr. Secretary, thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Ryan Spitz with Adams &amp; Maranti, business address of 168 8th Street, first floor, South Boston. Here on behalf of my client, Garrison Equities. Also joining me today is the project architect, Tim Johnson. Madam Chair, our revised plans trigger a building code refusal for the proposed vertical lift for handicap access through a full story. We will be seeking the variance through the state, but I wanted to chew it to F to the record, so there's no confusion with the Special Services Department. For background purposes on this proposal, this was in front of the board back in May 23. It was denied to further the community outreach. I believe the motion was made by Ms. Better Brazza, and that is exactly what the proponent did. We listened, we went back to the community, we eliminated the below-grade parking, we removed some balconies, we reduced the bedroom count, and we added more parking, again, because that was, that was requested by the abiding neighbors. At this point, we feel that the majority of the concerns were accommodated in the immediate directive.
Just come off, do it, County Spitz.
Are you, are you still with me?
We can hear him.
I'm not sure if you can hear his attorney, Spitz, but we can hear you. You froze.
We can hear him.
Madam Chair, we can hear him.
Oh, you can? Oh, maybe I froze because I couldn't, I couldn't hear.
I don't hear anything. Okay, I'll proceed. If there's an issue, Madam Chair, just let me know when I can just pause for a minute until you come back as well. So at this point, we feel that the majority of the concerns were accommodated, and the immediate directive orders were happy with the new proposed changes that are you going to see today. This is a proposal to combine three parcels, 185 East Street, 183 East Street, and 164 West 9th Street, with a total lot size of approximately 3,357 square feet. And we are going to be raising the existing structure at 185 East Street to erect a new four-unit multifamily residential dwelling with six-grade level off-street parking spaces and two additional parking spaces on the property for onsite parking. Building will be an all-electric building built using the Stretch Energy Code, which is 20% more efficient. It will be EV/PV ready. Vehicles will access the building off of West 9th Street via an 11-foot driveway, which will lead to the grade parking. Parking level in the building will contain eight spaces ranging from, total of six spaces ranging from two spaces at approximately eight and a half by 18 and the four spaces at seven feet, three inches by 18, which resulted in a parking design violation. There will also be a wheelchair lift access as well as trash storage, bike storage, and a utility room on that, on that grade level. Unit one will be approximately 1,263 square feet located on the first floor and part of the second floor. It will consist of a, of a two-bedroom, living, dining, and a two-bath plus an office space. Units two will be a carbon copy of unit one, approximately 1,278 square feet, first floor and part of the second. It will also consist of the two-bedroom, living, dining, two-bath, and an office space. Units three will be approximately 1,357 square feet located on part of the second floor and third. It will consist of a two-bedroom, living, dining, two-bath, and an office. Again, last unit, unit four, will be approximately 1,351 square feet located on part of the second floor and third. It will consist of a two-bedroom, living, dining, two-bath, and an office. Units two and four will have small balconies in the rear of ranging approximately 67 square feet. The roof plan will consist of mechanicals only with bulkhead access. There is a violation for height, as the height being proposed is 37 feet, which is compliant under Article 68. However, since the existing structure is being demolished, the max height allowed is this structure's height at 26 feet. Again, height is compliant under Article 68. We do have an insufficient lot size, 2,000 square feet of lot area is required for the first unit and a thousand square feet of lot area for each additional unit, which would require us to provide 5,000 square feet, but we are just shy at 3,357 square feet. The rear yard setback is, requirement is 15 feet, but we are at 3 feet, which is a pre-existing condition of that, of that structure that's being raised, and we are slightly increasing that with the new proposal. There was a violation for front yard, but it's my opinion, this was given in error as the violation is for window designs projected into the front yard at the second and third stories. There is no such violation as stated to govern air rights. However, we will conform to the Public Improvements Commission requirements of bays encroaching on the public way. We do have an open space violation. Proposal consists of 145 square feet per unit. The code is requiring 200 square feet per unit. We have an additional lot area violation. Again, that lot size is 3,357 square feet, which is shy of the 5,000 square feet requirement of the lot size of this project. In closing, I read the BPDA recommendation, and there appears to be some discrepancies. Back in May 2023, and with a much denser project at six units, the recommendation was for approval by the BPDA. Now at a much less dense project, coupled with accommodating the neighbors' concerns on the second go-around, the recommendation is based on denial. Also, there's a mention of 44 feet in height, which is inaccurate as the proposal is the 37 feet. If the denial based upon parking exterior of the building, if that is the issue, this can be addressed during design review as that would not create any more violations as the six proposed at grade will still be compliant under Article 68. And lastly, I'd like to end that this proposal is in line with the city's goals of adding more units of housing. At this moment, I know that was a lot of information. I'm going to pause and pass it over to the board for any questions or comments.
Any questions from the board?
Yes, so Bob DiMico recommended removal of one parking space, I believe, because you were cited for size issue because half of them should be compact, but you have majority compact. So the question I have is, would you still be compliant with five parking spaces?
No, we would not be compliant with five parking.
All right, so, okay. And so you're, also your site lot plan, I think, didn't have the sufficient minimum guidelines of a curb cut width, which is 10 feet. Is that achievable? Is that potentially just an error?
We do, I believe that was given in error, as, as you can see from our site plan that we're providing westy curb cut.
Okay, but the six in the inside, if there were to be all compact space, you were still would be in violation, so that violation still would hold. Okay, great, thank, I'm just thinking out loud here.
That would be the design violation that we do have.
Right, correct. Okay, thank you. No further questions.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, we'll open it to public testimony.
Hello, Madam Chair, and this is the board, Lydia Classby with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. An butters meeting for 185 East Street was hosted on December 13, 2023. A butters expressed concern that the building, the year loads at that construction state in the north of the park. One of the support was in favor of the trees and the green. At this time, our office is unaware of any additional concerns with this application. We would like to defer to the judgment of the board of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I have the whole of the stands. Go ahead.
Yep, that's right. Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. This is Vanessa Wu from Councilor Flynn's office speaking. Councilor Flynn would like to go on record in support based on a good community process and good faith compromises with the neighbors on several key areas of concern. The previous iteration of the project, the team listened to community concerns and reduced the unit count from six to four, as well as the number of bedrooms. They also removed side balconies to account for privacy concerns from neighbors and worked to address concerns on parking due to existing, the existing parking crisis in South Boston and the area. Councilor Flynn respectfully requests that the proponent continue to work with neighbors on any quality of life concerns that may arise during the construction phase. Thank you.
Thank you.
No additional questions.
Great. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with a couple of provizals. One is that it undergoes BPDA site planning review. Second, that you eliminate the outdoor two parking spaces, and, and that's it.
Okay, may I have a second?
And that there will be no building code violation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. McCall?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1517330 with the address of 84 to 90 A Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, will they explain the case to the board first?
Yes, Mr. Secretary, thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Ryan Spitz with Adams &amp; Maranti, business address of 168 8th Street, first floor, South Boston. Joining me today is the owner, Pat Coleboy, as well as the project architect, Tim Johnson. The site here is approximately about 1,669 square feet, containing a one-story, eight-unit garage with approximately 70-foot-wide curb cut facing A Street. Proposal is to add four stories with four, three-bedroom units with four ground-level off-street parking spaces. Curb cut will be reduced and sidewalks will be revitalized for pedestrian safety. Further, the building will be an all-electric building built using the Stretch Energy Code, which is 20% more efficient, and will be EV/PV ready. All the units will be three bedrooms, two bath, with open concept kitchen and dining room ranging from approximately 1,312 square feet to 1,385 square feet. Each unit will have 90 square feet balconies for open space. Unit four will have an exclusive roof deck accessed by a headhouse. We do have violations for insufficient lot size and additional lot size as the site consists of 669 square feet, and a proposal of this side will require 8,000 square feet as this project lies within an MFR LS sub-district. We have a roof structure restriction. I believe this violation was cited in error as the existing structure is not being demolished, but rather preserved with a vertical addition of four stories. The text amendment to Article 68 is based upon raising that existing structure on a parcel, on a parcel, which would then require a violation. The application was filed as an ALT. However, there is a height violation as the proposal at 50 feet is non-conforming to the code of 35 feet, but is consistent with the scale and the height of the adjacent buildings on A Street. We have a floor area ratio violation as the proposal calls for a 4.0 as compared to a compliant 1.5 due to the small site. We have an open space violation as we're required to provide 200 square feet per unit, but due to the small site constraints, the proposal cannot accommodate sufficient open space without sacrificing sufficient living space per unit. We have a side yard and a rear yard violation. This project builds to the edge of the lots, creating those violations of 15-feet rear yard and 3-feet side yard, but is consistent with the other neighboring buildings of the zero lot line. We have a parking violation. Proposal provides one space per unit, and zoning requires 1.5 spaces per unit, but this is aligned with the mayor's initiative of reducing dependency on private vehicles, specifically in transient areas like this one. Even though this project exceeds dimensional regulations for the site, it adds housing while maintaining the small print of the parcel in assisting the city's planning goal of increasing the housing supply. At this time, I'm going to pause for a moment and turn it over to the board for any questions or comments.
Thank you. Matt, is there public, I'm sorry, is there questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony? Councilor Wu's, I mean, Councilor Flynn's office?
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. This is Vanessa Wu from Councilor Flynn's office. Councilor Flynn would like to be able to support this project due to a good community process and work with the butters and the West Broadway Neighborhood Association and the attention to parking with a space for each unit, as well as the sidewalk infrastructure and pedestrian safety. However, Councilor Flynn is also respectfully requesting at this time that the board and BPDA look to strike the roof deck from the proposal. The roof deck piece does not alleviate the housing crisis, and quality of life issues emanating from roof decks in the form of parties at all hours and trash removal have been a long concern for neighbors in South Boston, especially seniors, persons with disabilities, and families with young children. Thank you.
Hello, Matt. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Lydia.
Madam Chair and members of the board, Lydia Classby with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. An butters meeting for 84 to 90 A Street was hosted on December 13, 2023. Community members expressed support for the proposal at this time. One mention was the prime location for the underutilized space. At this time, our office is unaware of any additional concerns with this application. We would like to defer to the judgment of the board of this. Thank you.
Thank you. James Cooper and Jeff, can you briefly, can you briefly tell us your name and address and let us know if you're in support or opposition?
Yeah, this is James Cooper. I live on 21 Royal Street, which is a couple of minutes from the, from the property in question. I'm in support of the new building. I've lived in the neighborhood for 17 years and experienced the gradual modernization of properties on the street of increased quality of life, and adding more residential properties in the neighborhood is helping to offset the increase of commercial properties inside the apartment. Thank you.
Jeff? Same? We're going to get this on here, Jeff. I sent a request out.
Okay, I will now.
Yep, we can hear you now. Can you briefly tell us if you're in support and opposition, give your address?
Yes, my name is Brad Bankman. We're in opposition to this project.
What's the address? Your address?
We're at 25 to 27 West 3rd Street, which directly abuts 84 to 90 A Street. And along with my brother, Tom, the Bankman family has owned Tolman Manufacturing for over 60 years. The Tolman owns a three-story house at 25 to 27 West 3rd Street, which directly abuts the, tell us, eight-bay garages at 84 to 90 A Street. The Kavanaugh's bought the eight-bay garage in 1975 for storage of building materials and later rented some of the bays for automobiles, which I myself have used at one time. Now the Kavanaugh family wishes to demolish the garages and erect a five-story structure completely blocking all ten windows of the, our second and the third floor. of the, our second and the third floor, as well as a nine-foot headhouse on top of that, passing the entire, our entire building in shadow and depriving us of light and air and preventing egress in case of a fire, preventing the fire department from putting up ladders and, and deploying hose trucks. So this lives to our detriment that the board granted them relief from these nine violations that exist. There's, all of those have, you know, sufficient weight to deny it, but it doesn't go well with the, with the area. It's not in keeping with the 100-year-old buildings that.
Please wrap up, Mr. Matt Bankman.
Okay. I, I think there's every reason to, to deny this, that the neighborhood does not need four more luxury three-bedroom apartments. It would be better to convert those garages to maybe eight small independent businesses.
Oh, thank, thank you, sir.
I have no additional reasons.
Does the applicant wish to respond to those concerns?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. This, this project is very well in, and I'm sure you all have read the BPA recommendation, it's very in line with some of the recently approved projects, and it's actually going to finish off the actual lot. The windows that Mr. Bankman, again, we've just learned of his issue not too long ago, but the windows that he's speaking of are non-conforming windows as well in this property. And further, it was informed to me by the client that this property is, there is no tenants living in this property, that the actual owner uses this property as, pretty much as like a flop house for his business, which is located down the street for when him and his brother need a place to stay. So with that said, Madam Chair, I'm going to turn it back over to you.
Do you have any comments with respect to Mr. Flynn's, Counselor Flynn's concerns with the roof deck?
Yeah, Counselor Flynn is, you know, I do appreciate his concerns with the roof decks. And, you know, it's pretty consistent with his roof decks entire South Boston as their policy is to, is to oppose all the roof decks. But given such the small, small site here, providing some sort of open space for the actual unit owners, I think is, is critical in this area. And it's consistent with some of the other projects that do have roof decks, but I do appreciate, I can understand Counselor Flynn's position on the actual roof deck.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
I, I do have questions for the architect. So where you have point, where you pointed the three-foot W light well? I'm assuming that for zoning purpose, that is the rear yard, right? Because I know this is a corner lot, correct?
That's correct, it's all.
And, yep, so in response to your abutters' window condition, you're also proposing windows, you know, along that wall. And I'm curious to know, you know, do you think, do you think your future buyer is, do you think they're going to be happy with that as well? Like from their bedrooms, looking at a three-foot gap with just a facade of windows versus taking advantage of all the windows that you have along A Street? So I'm just, I was just curious to, to hear your thoughts about that.
Yeah, a good comment, the plans have evolved over time. I think that's a good idea. We can certainly look at flipping the plan so we have the hallway on the other side. Those 10 windows on the abutting building are on the property line, they're.
I understand, I understand that. I mean, it is, it is what it is, but they are correct abutter. And I think if you're amendable to, to, you know, working with the, working with the BPDA, if, if, you know, the, you know, BPDA's recommendation was also to, to review kind of the side yards, you know, the setbacks. So I just was, wanted to understand your flexibility on that. Thank you, no further questions.
Yes, Ms. Better Barza, I'm just going to chime in. My apologies, Tim for interrupting, but yes, we're definitely amendable to working through these issues through BPDA design review.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? May I have a motion?
I also tend to agree with BPDA design review. Hansi, if you want to add enough specific details.
To review, yep, to review the interior layout so that if a greater setback is needed to provide relief to that rear, that would be a win-win for both parties.
Okay, with that, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Mukahal?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries, good luck.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Next, we have case BOA 1556891 with the address of 322 Monkey Hill Street. Is the applicant's handler or their representative here to explain the case to the board?
Hi, good morning, board members, Madam Chair, Mr. Secretary, thank you for the introduction. Marcos Overino here from Flow Design Architects, representing Ms. Kate Wilber. We are basically requesting for the release for the side yard insufficient for a new roof deck. She hired us back in, back last year because her property is kind of, kind of tight. So she's looking for, to have an outdoor space to be with her family, a single-family home. So she's the only one living in the space there. So as you can see in the site plan, her building is actually set back. It would be Unit 322A, so the roof deck would not have views from the street. So we're here if you guys have any questions in regards to that.
Thank you, questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Sean Breen with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. An abutters meeting was held for 322 Monkey Hill Street on December 21, 2023. Since that time, this office has received zero letters in opposition and zero in support. With that, we would defer our judgment to the board.
You, you.
Hey, Madam Chair, I'm sorry, we just came up. Kate, are you looking to get testimony on this proposal?
Yes, I'm the owner.
Oh, hi.
May I speak? Hi, my name's Patton Wilbur, I'm the owner.
We're, we're looking for feedback from the public, not the applicant, but I appreciate.
I'm sorry.
I appreciate your hand raised. Any other, any other public testimony?
I have no additional reasons.
With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion for a second.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Mukahal?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes, the motion carries, good luck, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Next, we have case BOA 1461682 with the address of 65 Falcon Street. Is the applicant's handler or their representative is present, will they explain the case to the board first?
Yes, Ms. Stenbridge, I apologize in this, at the earlier call, this is actually going to be a withdrawal without prejudice.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion, or do I need a motion, Samantha?
You can request a motion, Madam Chair.
Okay, may I have a motion?
Motion approved, a withdrawal.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Mukahal?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
With that, we'll move on to the schedule for 11:00 AM. And this time, we'll ask, we'll ask if there are any requests for withdrawals or deferrals from any of the cases in this timeframe?
Yes, 189 West Fifth Street, Board Six.
So that would be case BOA 1548795 with the address of 189 West Fifth Street.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Stenbridge. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago and Toscano with the business address of 11 Beacon Street. Here on behalf of the applicant, seeking a deferral based on the BPDA recommendations which recently had come out. They asked us to remove some parking spaces and make some additional dimensional changes to the rear yard, which we would like to accommodate and come back to the board with those changes.
Thank you, how much time do you need?
I mean, we, you know, I don't know what, what the board is on for deferrals, but the next, they have the board.
Samantha?
We have the date of April 9th, Madam Chair.
That's perfect.
Okay, may I have a motion?
Motion for a request of April 9th.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Mukahal?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries, to you then.
Thank you very much.
Any further requests for withdrawals or deferrals from this timeframe?
And also a reminder again that we are a six-member board.
With that, we will move on to case BOA 1554840 with the address of 157 Everett Street. Is, is the applicant's handler or their representative is present, will they explain the case to the board first?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Stenbridge. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Marancy, I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. Madam Chair, members, I represent City Realty. This is a residential project that was approved by the board in June 2021, and construction has been completed. This permit application was originally filed as 1 Adamson Street. The building is located at the corner of Everett Street and Addison, Adamson Street. The address of the original building was in fact 1 Adamson Street, which is why the original permit application was filed as such. On the initial plan set, the main entry to the building is located on Everett Street, and ISD generated a new street number, namely 157 Everett Street. Throughout the community process and the BPDA design review process, however, the main entry was moved back to the Adamson Street side of the building. Accordingly, my client submitted an amend application to ISD to change the address back to 1 Adamson Street, consistent with the location of the main entry. In response to that application, ISD issued a present zone refuse letter citing insufficient rear yard and traffic visibility across the corner. The rear yard violation arises simply from the fact that what had once been a conforming side yard became a non-conforming rear yard setback owing solely to the new street address. As for the traffic visibility violation, the plans examiner at ISD related that that violation had simply been missed on the original refusal letter. There's a significant amount of setback in open space at the corner of Adamson and Everett Street, I'm not even sure that the violation in fact exists. So while these two violations in new terms of citation, the building, and all of these dimensions and setbacks are identical to what was approved by this board in June 2021, including the location of the main entry, which was on Adamson Street at that time and remains on Adamson Street with this latest amend application. This is how the building has been approved by BPDA, and as I said, how it has been built, it is a building that construction has been approved.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Previously, there was a long public process conducted for this, this project as it was built out. No new process was given due to the diminutive proposal. We did have him connect with the Allson Civic Association, which decided to defer to the board. With that, I will defer to the board at this time stating that we're unaware of any major concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no other questions.
With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the project.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Mukahal?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1544318 with the address of 9 Chilwell Road. Is the applicant's handler or their representative present, will they please explain their request to the board?
We have a raise here, like MDR construction?
Thank you. Yes.
Yes.
They're coming back on as okay, I'll ask, Madam Chair.
Okay.
They should be able to unmute themselves now.
Yes, good morning, can you hear us now?
Yes, sir.
Good morning, Madam Chair. So we're here today because of the.
Just put your name, can you say your name for the record?
Yes, my name is Fabio Manzocco, I'm a project manager at MDR Construction. We are the contractor for this project, this small addition. We have a small addition to the property. It's a vertical addition on top of the existing first floor. It's going to be on the east side of the building. We're just creating a master bathroom that connects directly to the master bedroom. That is because the applicants, better, the residents have been there for seven years. Now the girls are growing, they need a second bathroom. So the, the violation was on the existing building, was on what was already there. There's no addition to the, to the foundations. We're just going up, but clearly there was this violation on the left side of the existing building. So that's, that's why we're here. Yep, the total, the total support footage is just eighty-two and a half. It's a seven and a half by eleven addition.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Sorry, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, we'd like to defer to the judgment of this board. We're unaware of any concerns at this time. Notifications went out and the applicant eventually went on to meet with the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council, which voted to support this proposal seven to zero in support of the applicant. With that, we'll defer to the board at this time, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Madam Chair, I have no other reasons.
With that, may I have a motion?
Motion approved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Mukahal?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries, good luck.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1536574 with the address of 64 San, Sanborn Avenue. If the applicant's handler or their representative is present, will they explain the board, the case to the board first?
Good morning, members of the board, Cameron Merrill on behalf of the applicant, who is on this call as well, Michael Keating, as well as our architect, Michael Kim. We appreciate the opportunity to present, I'll try to be brief. This is an existing two-family. This is an existing two-family in West Roxbury. Mr. Keveney lives in this building on the second floor with his family and two young children, who presently sleep in effectively what is a sunroom. Mr. Keveney works in Brookline and has a distance requirement from his job, which requires he stay within proximity to his job in Brookline, and he has two young children in school near this address. So effectively, what this project will allow Mr. Keveney and his family to do is to continue to live and grow in place in his home without having to relocate to a bigger property somewhere else. This is a project that stays within the existing wall, effectively the setbacks that are currently present. He's not expanding beyond the existing setbacks. He has a letter of support, which came in this morning from the immediately affected butter across the street that these windows will look at. And ultimately, we think this is a low-impact project that makes good use of what's effectively a vacant attic, and will allow his family to stay in place.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Hi, this is Ben Tyag from the Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, there was a Butters meeting for this project on November 29th. It was approved by the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council on December 19th, and all letters and opinions on this project have been sent to the board. At this time, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services defers to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I have no raised hand, sorry.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Motion approved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Bedebrazza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Mukohal?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have case BOA 154-8022 with the address of 1029 Tremont Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they explain the case to the board quickly?
Good morning, Madam Chair and board members. My name is Ray Falk. I am representing Richard Alford Architects, and this project is proposing to put a body art studio on the first-floor commercial space at 1029 Tremont Street. There is no variances, but the use is conditional.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Good afternoon, members, sorry, good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. I'm answering with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Just a background on the community process, and a Butters meeting was not conducted. However, I did have them fly 300 feet of the, 300 feet within the property. I received one objection, and it was in regards to safety and loitering, which owners were able to share their lease agreement to ensure that that tattoo shop is appointment only. Our office would like to defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I have no raised hand.
With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion for approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Bedebrazza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Mukohal?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 151-2795 with the address of 64 Telegraph Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they explain the case to the board quickly?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Kevin Cludier. I'm an attorney with a business address of 1990 Center Street in West Roxbury. I'm joined by the project applicant and owner, Cameron Robertson. 64 Telegraph Street is a three-family condominium dwelling in South Boston. We're here because we're seeking conditional use relief to extend an existing third-story rear deck at this location. This is an amendment because ISD previously issued by Wright an ALT permit that allowed for the construction, or really the reconstruction of some dilapidated rear decks for the first story and the second story. And before I get into the specifics, if you don't mind, please go on just to the first slide. That will show the, as existing on the left, the middle shot there is just a view from Gate Street to Side Street, and what we're proposing would be to the right. And if you can please go down to the second slide, just some site context. The star on the left shows the project location in this area of South Boston, just to the west of Thomas Park at Dorchester Heights. And the, to the right, you see really the affected neighborhood, that one block area where the home is. As you see, the home is on Telegraph Street, heading right up towards Thomas Park. And but as you can see in this one-block area, and other photos will show, it's very common in this, in this context for these homes to have rear decks that face inward into that interior block area where there is some greenery and trees, and that's really what we're asking this board to approve. If you can maybe go to slide five to just show you the plans briefly. What the, what you can see is the existing decks for the first and second story extend out, they're eighteen point five feet by twelve point three feet, 226 square feet. There is an existing third-floor deck which rests above. If you can see on the bottom right, the way the home is designed, the third story is inset from the top of the second story. So the existing third-floor deck currently sits on top of that second-story living area, and that's why it's a pre-existing non-conforming use. And by extending that third-floor deck, we are extending that pre-existing nonconformity, thus triggering the requirement for the zoning relief. The new, the new deck will be a total of 217 square feet. I would like to just note that during the community process, or following the community process, my clients decided to bring the third-floor proposed deck in by three feet. It was originally intended to extend all the way out flush with the second first-story deck, but we decided to bring that in three feet to seventeen percent decrease in the overall square footage of that deck. And that was just to address some of the issues that we, that were raised during the community process. Just for some more context for the board's consideration, if you go down to slide 12, just to show the board really what this would look like. Yep, if you can keep going, that'd be great. As you walk out, so that on the left is the walkout in the third-floor unit, my client's own. And again, they're not looking to flip this, they just want to improve their own living space. If they walk out onto the existing rear deck, if they look west, you can see some, some decks just to the left. If you look to the northwest, that's just a view, the city is off in that distance. Next slide, please. This is just, we're looking more from to the north and then the northeast. And again, you can see there are a number of decks in that interior block area, which is what we're seeking to do here. And then if you can go down, please, as far as zoning goes, these aren't variances that we're requesting. It's a conditional use because it's a violation of the roof structure restrictions, Article 68-29. And so the, the board is really to consider the conditional use factors. We'd suggest that this is a very appropriate project for this client, for this neighborhood. The BPDA agrees and feels that it's in line with a lot of the other deck, decks that are built in this area. And we have also received a number of letters of support from some, some of the locals. So I turn it over to the board at this point for any questions that anyone may have.
Thank you. Do you have any pictures of the front? So, you know, we've also received a number of emails in opposition, and they indicate that there is already an existing roof deck for this unit. Can you confirm, clarify for us that first piece?
I don't believe I have a picture of the front of the home in this presentation, but there is an existing roof deck that's on, like a traditional roof deck on the actual roof of the building. That was constructed in 1998, and it's approximately, is twelve by around twenty feet. And according to my clients, it's just, it's kind of a clunky area, difficult to access, something that's not often used by them. They certainly prefer to, this rear deck area, just as it, as it sort of extends out into that sort of open area in the middle of that block. But I don't, I don't have necessarily a photograph. I guess if you went to the very...
But to confirm, this would be a second deck for this unit, a second roof deck? Or deck?
Yeah, oh, yes, yes, I will confirm that, yes.
Okay. Questions from the board?
Yes, you said that it was, that the roof deck was built in 1998? Is that accurate?
That, my review of the building records at ISD shows a 1998 permit issued for the construction of that, that roof deck, yes.
Okay, great. And is Jeff Hampton on the table? By any chance, from BPDA?
Yeah, I'm there.
Okay. Yeah, looking at that streetscape, I do see a lot of roof deck that really is a butts right to that street facade, and it just, it's just something to... Does the BPDA, in terms of future roof deck, does it begin to provide setbacks, or does it kind of continue with past practice? Because it really is, it's really disturbing the topology of the, how the long-end street...
You can see it from the front.
I'm just, I just wanted to ask Jeff if, if that's still in practice at BPDA currently?
Yeah, so I mean, this is, I'm trying to, so I don't know...
It's just an observation, so I just want to make, and it's not part of...
Well, just looking at it, I don't know if that's something that we would have signed off on, but if it's...
Right, right, that was in 1998, so I just, that's why I wanted to confirm. Okay, that sounds good. It's not part of our scope, but I just was, wanted your opinion on that for if...
My opinion is we probably would have sent it back.
Correct, so doesn't, great, the non-conformity in this context. Okay, great, I don't have any further, further questions.
I did feel to mention, the Dorchester Heights Association did also approve this matter, but...
For the rear?
Yes, the rear deck, yes, this proposal, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. Lydia Fasky with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. A Butters meeting for 64 Telegraph Street was hosted on November 21st, 2023. Community members expressed concern citing opponent already has decks, concern over code violations, received additional story with deck, dangerous construction debris from prior construction projects, concern of a light blockage, deck proximity to lot line, and load issues. Our offices received thirteen letters of support. Additionally, the Dorchester Heights Neighborhood Association is in support of this proposal. Alternately, we have received four letters of opposition and have logged comments of opposition. At this time, our offices are aware of any additional concerns with this application. We would like to defer to the judgment of the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Lydia, do you, I'm sorry, do you have a sense of the, whether those supporters are generally a Butters or not?
Um, I, no, actually, I did take a log. I must say that it's probably a bit of a fluke. Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McGent, City Councillor, Mary Murphy's office, would like to echo the sentiments of the councillor's office in opposition. Thank you.
Hi, Madam Chair and members of the board. This is Vanessa Wu from Councillor Flynn's office. Councillor Flynn would like to oppose this project due to feedback from the Butters and neighbors in the area. He would like to highlight that this project will have no impact on addressing the housing crisis in Boston, and it is difficult to understand why a second exclusive deck would cause any hardship that requires zoning relief. A second exclusive roof deck for this condo is unnecessary and will bring additional quality of life issues to the neighbors. The proposed deck will extend the height of the rear deck and will take up most of the yard at 64 Telegraph Street. Moreover, roof decks have long been a source of loud noise, disturbances and trash removal issues in South Boston for many years, which were subsequently exacerbated by the pandemic. And South Boston has endured significant quality of life issues for years due to loud house parties, roof deck, with roof decks often the location of such parties. Neighbors have expressed that expanding this roof deck would naturally be the purpose of inviting additional people to engage in these activities that have negatively impacted neighbors' quality of life and disturbed a Butters. Lastly, Councillor Flynn has a long record of opposing roof decks and expansions like this over the last several years due to all the aforementioned quality of life issues that impact our seniors, persons with disabilities, families with young children, as well as trash removal concerns associated with similar proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
And before the public testimony, I know there's a few raised hands, and you could briefly tell us if you are supportive or opposition, at least your name and address. I'll start with Thomas, and then go to Meg.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, thank you for letting me speak, but I'm Thomas Clark. I am the owner of 62 Telegraph Street, Unit 1, which directly abuts 64 Telegraph. You know, I, most of what I was going to say was actually just addressed by Ms. Wu, but I just would like to, you know, reiterate that this proposal is not simply a request to add a deck to this unit, but a request for a second deck in addition to their existing large deck. It seems kind of deceptive, the way that the owners and their attorney have laid out their proposal, you know, completely leaving out the fact that they have that deck, which I've seen people on plenty of times. The previous owner I was friends with, you know, utilized that deck all the time, and the idea that it's some clunky area that can't be used seems a bit ridiculous. On top of that, they already exceeded their previous building permit last year to extend those decks. Originally, it said that they were supposed to replace the existing decks with ones of the same size, and the decks they put in were, you know, four to five times bigger than they, they were previously. Through, for about three or four months of construction, there was debris all over my backyard, my, you know, pieces of wood on my furniture, and screws and nails everywhere. They ripped the Comcast wires off of my house, you know, which damaged the siding. You know, I just can't see how more construction isn't going to just lead to the same problems. On top of that, it's just the, you know, quality of life and privacy back there and the sunshine that will be taken away from our unit. That's all I have to say, and thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Meg? Name and address?
Good morning. This is Megan from the Commons, senior director of Butters to 64 Telegraph. That 20... We are firmly opposed to this proposed roof deck extension. This property already has exclusive access to a large private roof deck in addition to the lower roof deck that they have been asked to extend. They already have the private outdoor space they are claiming the proposal will grant them. This roof deck would not improve quality of life in any meaningful way for 64 Telegraph, but would inevitably create ongoing problems for neighboring properties. Telegraph Hill is a very small, and this third-floor walkout roof deck would actually be four floors above ground level on the downhill back currents at 268th Street and 62 Telegraph Street. Even with the newly proposed offset, there is still a, it's a very big setback from the property line. Last summer, we had to contend with ash, nails, and dangerous constructs of the breeze, such as a board with nails falling into our backyard from Tetherback. Other those two massive decks, we need to go around with a magnet of nails every time we wanted to let our toddler into our backyard. Even with a newly proposed offset, construction of these decks has proven that there is a risk of severe injury posed by objects falling off them, and this additional roof deck extension would drive that risk even higher. The height of this proposed roof deck extension will also unfairly reduce access to sunlight in our backyard, creating a canyon effect and blocking an excessive amount of the sky. This would greatly reduce our ability to enjoy our backyard. We are also very concerned about noise. At least one party thrown at 64 Telegraph since the current owners took possession has had to be shut down by the police. We are very concerned that a unit with two large private roof decks directly abutting our property could make it very difficult for our toddler to get adequate sleep on weekends and be a source of significant noise pollution in a neighborhood with many other young families and elderly residents. The homeowners at 64 Telegraph began building last summer on a permit for a much smaller structure. Partway through construction, the ISD had to issue a stop work order when they began building right up to their downhill property line and far out towards their rear property line in violation of both their permit and city zoning laws. When they resumed construction under new permit, they again built more than the scope of their permit allowed. Even though they are here to contest the CBA's approval for this roof deck extension, they have already gone ahead and framed the exterior perimeter of the proposed structure. They seem to view this process as a mere formality and take the CBA's approval for granted. This massive structure is also only supported by a three foot high wooden retaining wall inaccessible behind their fence. It was built by a previous owner at 64 Telegraph to level the backyard. We are deeply concerned that it is not rated to withstand lateral stress these decks have placed on it, and with climate change bringing more and more rain to Boston every year, we are very worried that this wooden retaining wall could fail unexpectedly and leave these decks unstable and at risk of sliding down the hill into our home, especially if additional weight is added to the structure through construction of this roof deck extension. I previously raised all of these concerns at the November abutters meeting for this proposal, and neither of the homeowners at 64 Telegraph have attempted to reach out to me to address them the month since. To my knowledge, they also haven't reached out to any of my other neighbors who spoke in opposition at the meeting. I was shocked to see today that they have also altered their plans since the abutters meeting and have made no attempt to notify their neighbors of the changes. I would also like to point out that the when they brought this to the Dorchester Heights Civic Association, they did so before the abutters meeting, and I believe many abutters were not aware that this was being discussed at that civic association meeting. They have also shown themselves unwilling to engage with their communities. They do not.
Ma'am, please, please wrap up.
I am, thank you. They have shown themselves unwilling to engage with the community and do not seem equipped to deal with problems that may arise down the road if this roof deck extension is built. We therefore earnestly ask the CBA to reject the petition. Thank you.
If there are any other raised hands, please be brief and add new information.
Patricia, can you give your name and address, give me information?
My name is Patricia Finnegan, and I live at 6668 Telegraph, the eight condo unit directly next door to 64. And I'm not I'm gonna keep it very brief. I agree with everything that has been said by Ms. Thomas, Mr. Clark, Ms. Wu. I really oppose this deck being built for all of the reasons that have already been mentioned. Thank you very much.
Thank you. No additional raised hands.
Okay. Other questions from the board? Any last comment from the applicant if you'd like to address any of those matters briefly?
If I will, I will be very brief regarding some of the points that were made. The decks that have been previously approved, they've also been fully inspected by ISD. There was no formal stop work order initially. The contractor applied for those existing rear decks on a short form, which was incorrect procedurally. They were told they had to be applied for on a long form. It wasn't a stop work order. And again, they've been inspected, so they do not exceed the scope of the plans that were previously submitted. When we did make amendments to the plans by reducing the extension of the third floor deck, I immediately sent those over to Neighborhood Services and and Dorchester Heights and asked that they send it out to their, you know, collective list so people would be aware of those changes. Regarding my clients, they are two very, very professional individuals. They have not had any issues. They have not been the cause of any issues at that property. There have been no police reports that have been issued out of that property since they have owned it for the past year. What they are asking for is an extension of 133 square feet into the rear of their apartment, which is very similar to surrounding homes in the surrounding area, as noted by the BPDA. And regarding the construction, most of the construction work is done, all the footings were replaced, those two other decks were erected. It would be a very quick project to add what we are asking for today. Of course, my client should be very, you know, popular contractor. We we hate the fact that there were some issues and and neighbors felt that there was, you know, contracts that were careless with their prior construction, but that is something we'll deal directly with the contractor with. So again, I'd ask that the board consider the scope of this project and allow it consistent with a lot of the surrounding property. Thank you.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
I'm sure I'm gonna make a motion to deny.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. McCall?
Uh, yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries. Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1525296 with the address of 429 to 431 West Broadway. The applicant and or their representative is present. Would they explain the case to the board, please?
Yes, Mr. Secretary, thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Ryan Spitz with Adams and Maranti, business address 168 8th Street, First floor, South Boston. Joining me today is chef owner Nick Dixon, as well as the other co-owners Eric Almbach and Mike Carman, whom many of you may know. They own many restaurants in South Boston and have a stellar reputation within the community. The site known as 429 through 431 West Broadway is a one-story building that has two separate restaurant spaces. The Meatball Shop in Southie Chinese located on an active mixed-use block near other bars, cafes, and restaurants that offer dine-in and takeout. At one time, these two commercial units were one. The Meatball Shop has been closed for nearly five years in Southie Chinese for almost two years. The proposal in front of us today is for a conditional use permit to combine these commercial spaces back into one restaurant with the kitchen, dining room, and a private function room in the basement. This is going to be a chef-owned and operated concept. The name of the restaurant will be Cook House. Cook House will have a cozy feel featuring smaller, unique areas within the overall space, including the open kitchen that resides in the middle of the of the room. As you walk in there, there is an intimate cafe space in the front with 28 dining seats and a circular fireplace in the middle of the room. Part of the space is the bakery café counter where bakery items and coffee will be served. The front dining room features a 40-foot six skylight that floods the room with light from early morning, early morning till sunset. The dining room and café will be open for breakfast along with lunch and dinner. The dining room will have full sailing height trees and plants throughout, along with 54 seats with an additional 32 dining seats on the other side of the trees closer to the bar. Inside the Cook House kitchen area, there will be 26 dining seats around the wood-fired kitchen where the guests can watch food being prepared while they dine. Once you walk 20 feet from the front room past the kitchen, you enter the back dining room with approximately 66 dining seats. There will be four different areas to dine in within one space. There is also a staircase and an elevator for handicap access to the restrooms, which are located downstairs, as well as a private function room that can be reserved for family or company dinners, which will also be made available for community events and fundraising events for local charities. Capacity upstairs on the first level, we we have approximately 235 dining seats, 59 standing room for the equivalent of 294 capacity on that first level. The downstairs, we have 102 dining seats, 20 standing room for approximately 122 capacity in the bottom floor. Hours of operation, we will be open from 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM daily and closing at 1:00 AM. Coffee bakery items at 7:00 AM, breakfast, lunch from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Dinner service will begin from 4:00 PM to 12:00 AM. Kitchen will stop serving food at 12:00 AM for closing again for a closing time of 1:00 AM. As for deliveries, there is a dedicated space on West Broadway for a loading zone from the hours of 7:00 AM to 11:00 AM that will be utilized by the applicant for all deliveries. There's approximately 200 feet space that is allocated for these deliveries. We have violations for conditional use permit for a restaurant with takeout and extension of a nonconforming use of a restaurant, as well as the off-street parking insufficiency. As for the off-street parking, there is a lot in in the rear of this property that runs parallel with Broadway on Silver Street that is owned by the actual owners of the restaurant, and that will be available for parking for employees, approximately 14 spaces. There is also a municipal lot across the street from this location. Most of the patrons and employees are a very close walking distance to the restaurant. At this point, I'm gonna pause for a minute and turn it over to the board for any questions or comments.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Gary Dunn, may I have public testimony?
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board, Lydia Classy with the mayor's office of Neighborhood Services. An abutters meeting for 429 to 431 West Broadway was hosted on December 14th, 2023. Community members and abutters expressed overwhelming support for the proposal. Our office has received six letters of support and no letters of opposition. At this time, our office is unaware of any additional concerns with this application. We would like to defer to the judgment of the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vanessa?
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. This is Vanessa Wu from Councilor Flynn's office. Councilor Flynn would like to go on record in support based on a good community process where neighbors and abutters express positive feedback for another restaurant in the area as well as the concept. Councilor Flynn would like to respectfully request that the team continue to work closely with neighbors during the construction phase on all quality of life issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no raised hands at the moment. Sorry, one just popped up. Do I want to take it or?
Uh, sure.
Okay. Yeah, okay. Greg, the father?
Hi, I'm a lifelong resident of South Boston, but I'd just like to go in support of Nick in in the restaurant group. I've owned them for many years.
What's your address, Greg?
My business address is 339 Dorchester Street, but I also own real estate on Gold Street, which is an abutting property to the backside of of the businesses on Gold Street, so 272 Gold Street. But.
Okay, okay, and we received the the support in the chat as well. To the applicant, can I just, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Father?
Oh, yeah, I just I live across the street, 420 West Broadway, and full support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, do I want to keep going?
I'm gonna ask if anyone is in opposition to put your note into the chat because I I'm gonna gather that there's a definite support for it. So I just have a question for the applicant, or not a question, but a comment from the Disabilities Commission. I believe they had a just a concern about accessibility, so I don't know if you want to address that.
Yeah, no, thank you, Madam Chair. We did read the BPDA recommendation on the accessibilities and and the applicant is amenable to making those changes to make it more accessible. And again, there is an accessibility elevator within the building itself that will allow accessible ability down to the basement for the restrooms. But again, we did hear the concerns surrounding the tables and the bars, and the applicant is willing to be amenable to to those changes with the Disability Commission.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions from the board? May I have a motion?
I'm going to go through.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. McCall?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck with everything.
Great, thank you.
Next case has been declared. So we'll move on to case BOA 1556758 with the address of 39 Baldwin Street. If the applicant and or their representative present, would they explain the case to the board?
Yes, Mr. Stenbridge, good morning again, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Lenz with an address of 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioners, John Brennan and Jen Holden, who are the property owners of 39 Baldwin Street. If we can jump down, probably to slide six, Madam Ambassador, probably the place to start. Madam Chair, members of the board, this is a pre-existing, single-family home located in the RH 1500 sub-district of Charlestown neighborhood. Our proposal would involve a vertical addition at the third level to allow an expansion of the existing living space in the building. It's a relatively minor proposal. I can walk through the zoning summary if the board would like. With respect to the violations that were cited by the Inspection Service Department, the first item is the rear yard. If we want to jump down to slide 10, that is the plot plan. Perfect. So with respect to rear yard, as you can see, it's somewhat of an odd-shaped lot. We have an area behind the property that extends back sort of in a regular pattern. Because the depth of the rear yard extends from 3 to about 21.9 feet, we would require relief for any addition proposed that's within the 25-foot setback. So that is the first variant we're requesting. However, I would point out that the addition would remain within the footprint of the existing building. The second item, if we want to jump down to the floor plans, let's go to slide 13, please, Madam Ambassador. So with respect to the floor plans, we're showing essentially the existing conditions that are there already. There is some modifications that are being proposed to the existing basement basement area. That is already occupiable space, but also the expanded playroom. We don't make much change with respect to the first floor or the second floor plan. If we want to jump to the next slide, it'll show us our third floor plan, which is part of the addition. So we're showing here the addition of two bedrooms, bath and some additional space, including a small office and some storage. And then the roof, just we're showing the proposed skylines that are being added. As a result of that additional floor space that's being proposed, we would be in violation of the FAR. Currently, it's 2.08, which is already a pre-existing nonconforming condition. We would be increasing that to 2.77 and therefore require variance under the Charlestown zoning code. The last item we need is usable open space. We were excited for the usable open space because it's arguably insufficient already. However, we tend to disagree with ISD on that. You only require that 150 square feet, and that rare portion of the yard that I showed actually would be more than 100 square feet of usable open space. However, since it was cited, we did appeal that decision as well, so we request relief for that. Other than that, there are no other violations that would be need to be addressed. Everything else, again, is a pre-existing, nonconforming condition, and all of the relief that is being requested has been stated. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions of the board. Again, a relatively straightforward proposal.
Thank you, Attorney Lenz. Any questions from the board? Gary Dunn, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Sean Green with the mayor's office of Neighborhood Services. An abutters meeting was held for 39 Baldwin Street on December 28th, 2023. Since that time, this office has received zero letters in opposition and zero in support. With that, we would defer our judgment to the board.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, no raised hands.
With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, before a motion of approval with a proviso that it undergoes BPDA design review, given that.
A second? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Given that the property is located within the Charlestown neighborhood design overlay district.
Thank you, may I have a second? Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barza? Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. McCall?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
So we're gonna hear the next case at 11:30 and then take a break, so Mr. Stenbridge?
And that case is for other rediscussions scheduled for 11:30. There are two companions.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, Ms. Stenbridge, with Attorney Jeff Drago, Drago and Toscano. We're actually seeking, I don't believe deferrals were called yet for 11:30.
Oh, okay, nope, they were not, so you can do that, but then and then we're gonna take a break. Go ahead, Ms. Stenbridge.
So with that, we'll ask for any withdrawals or deferrals from the 11:30 timeframe?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Jeff Drago, Drago and Toscano, with a business address of 11 Beacon Street, the case is 261 Princeton Street, Board 1. And we are seeking a deferral in the matter. We were here last time, we had deferred due to a smaller board. We are still seeking a full board, but also since then, the BPDA has actually, based on the plan East Boston, has updated and put in a new recommendation, which we would like to comply with as well.
So let's take a pause so A, Mr. Stenbridge can read it into the record, and B, I understand there's an interpreter who who can then interpret. So, Mr. Stenbridge?
So this would be for case BOA 1540041 with the address of 261 Princeton Street. And along with that would be case BOA 1540166, also with the address of 261. And along with that would be case BOA 154-0166, also with the address of 261 Princeton Street. Go ahead, Jenny Drago.
Is the interpreter present? Ms. Barza? No. Yes, yes, yes. Sorry, I was just a little confused on which one. Nobody specified where I was going to work. I'm sorry, there was a little confusion. My name is Frania Fuentes. This is a Spanish interpreter from Raport Internacional. Everything that you say will be interpreted and will be confidential. Buenos dias, mi nombre es Frania Fuentes, soy intérprete de español. Sépa que todo lo que usted diga será interpretado y mantenido en confidencialidad.
Do you need the attorney to repeat what he just said?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, please.
Okay.
Mr. Drago?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago and Tiscano, with a business address of 11 Beacon Street.
Sí, soy el, pues con la dirección de 11, Beacon Street.
We are here today seeking a deferral for two reasons. One, in the hopes of having a full board present. And then, two, the BPDA has updated its recommendation based on plan East Boston.
Estamos aquí esperando referido de, dos referidos, una para tener un-
And-
I don't understand. I'm sorry. Para tener un borde completo y un presente, y otro para el BPD en el área de East Boston.
And based on that, we're looking to make changes to comply with those recommendations.
Basado en este, estamos esperando hacer cambios para hacerlo de acuerdo a las recomendaciones.
Thank you.
So Samantha, when do we have a full board next?
April 9, Madam Chair.
We would actually, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Samantha. We were hoping for a May date just because we would go back, obviously make the changes, and then go back to the community process, if you have a table.
Oh, apologies. The full board date that we have on file for May would be May 7, Madam Chair.
Okay. Estábamos esperando para una fecha en mayo. El borde completo es para mayo 7.
Okay, and is that agreeable, Attorney Drago?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair.
Estamos de acuerdo en este, sí.
With that, may I have a motion?
Con esto, nos hacemos una moción.
Motion to defer the case to May 11.
I'm sorry, can someone make the motion?
No, I'm going. Motion to defer the case to May 7. That him.
Okay, Mr. Drago?
El 7 de mayo.
Okay, Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Sí. Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Sí. Ms. Better Barza?
Yes.
Barza, sí. Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Collins, sí. Ms. McCall?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much, members of the board.
La moción se aprobó. Muchas gracias.
All right, I think that's it for 261. And any other withdrawals or withdrawals before we take a break?
Entonces es todo. ¿Alguna pregunta antes de que tomemos un descanso?
Ma'am, I think you were only for 261 Princeton, so we're, am I correct, Samantha?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you so much for translating. I think we're all set with that.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other withdrawals or deferrals for the 1130s? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to have us take a break then, 15 minutes.